Next item on the agenda is item number six. Peterson Equities, LTD, and Sharon Gillespie.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Bristol representing the applicant. And we are on... Hello? Okay. Again, Christopher Bristol representing the applicant in the subject site plan special permit applications. We are at the east corner. East corner of Soundview and Fieldpoint right next door. The property is comprised of about 1.3 acres. Currently, it's three separate properties, each developed with a multifamily building. The buildings in total currently contain 16 dwelling units and various driveways and parking areas. The proposal before you is to merge the properties and remove the buildings and construct on the properties two multifamily buildings, both containing six units each for a total of 12 units. So the 16 existing units are going to be replaced with a total of 12. The buildings will be constructed over a common parking garage containing 22 parking spaces with nine on the surface. Nine parking spaces on the surface. You'll see before you, on the site plan, proposed access to the site is by way of a circular drive coming off Fieldpoint Road that leads to a few parking spaces and a surface access. Around the corner, down on Soundview, is the entrance, the driveway entrance to the parking garage, which you can see there that accesses the 22 parking spaces in the garage on the three surfaces. Subject to a comment I'm going to get to in a minute, all of the proposed development is compliant with the zoning regulations. Now I say "the comment" because there's the obvious question about the architectural, the rooftop, in terms of the height of the stair bulkhead as well as the setback of the stair and elevator bulkheads. Now, we originally proposed... If you see, there's sort of a... four-wall-shaped buildings with the core access being located in the middle, and the units over onto each side of them. Now, what we had proposed at the top of the core is the elevator overrun and the stair bulkheads, which are located in these areas here. Now, as pointed out by staff and discussed internally with the architects, the stair bulkheads and the elevator bulkheads are right up against the edge of the roof. We had originally proposed to resolve that by creating a sort of false roof to give extra roof area so that you can, well, we can meet the setback. We ran that by Jody Couture, the zoning enforcement officer, who said, "Yeah, I understand it." So I'd go along with it. Obviously, you're the, this commission's, the ultimate determination interpretation of the regulations and based upon comments at the staff briefing yesterday, it didn't seem like that would fly. So what we had done was, the architects actually have another solution. It's actually a very easy one. We have about 300 square feet of floor area left over on the site. So what we had proposed to do was fill in the spaces underneath, on the penthouse level, just below the roof. And there's, what you'll see in the floor plans, you end up...
So effectively, you're adding a room behind that stairway?
Exactly, yeah. Or to the side of the two bedrooms. So the both unit bedrooms are on the side, and then there's a little walk-in closet or a sitting room, whatever it is. So that's how we proposed to resolve it.
So it'll just be one story high at the penthouse level?
Yes.
Okay. That's one side of the building. Let's go to the other side now. What did we do there?
It's the same thing over on the other side as well.
Well, it's interesting because the other side, you have the entranceway and you have an opening through the second floor, I think, don't you?
Yeah.
Whereas the first floor is there, and so it's open. Frankly, if you just redesigned that ever so slightly, you probably used the same concept in that.
That's correct. Rich Granoff, Granoff Architects, representing the contract FND, 125 Fieldpoint Road LLC. That's correct. We did this study yesterday and resolved it, and we know that we can do something similar without using FAR, so...
You'll do, yeah.
Exactly.
So why do we need access to the roof?
Why do we need access to...
Why, do we need or don't we need?
Do you?
For the use of the penthouse units.
Well, you do have access...
Through the units, so why do you...
You're talking about the second access?
Yeah.
That's a second means of egress.
It's not required on a single-family unit.
That is not our determination from previous applications to the building department.
But you're opening up to public. You're saying that...
That's not correct.
So you're saying there's no public access to the roof?
That is correct. The roof is private access for the four penthouse units only. Each one has its own bulkhead up to the roof, and there's a second means of egress from that roof down through the common core of the building.
How will you control... I mean, part of your problem is, of course, the elevator overrun has a stop on the roof.
That's correct.
So is that going to like...
The elevator penthouse is in the middle of the plan, so there's not an issue of it being up against the edge of the building. It's the stairs that are...
Well, once you correct it with your, correct with what you're going to do, there won't be a problem. I'm asking now as a matter of access to that. I mean, is that final stop on the roof keyed or something?
That's correct. Each of the floors will be keyed and only accessible by the residents of that floor.
So that elevator going to the roof is for the two penthouse apartments?
That's correct.
Well, it takes care of that part of the problem. Sounds like it takes care of that part of the problem, so... DPW, as you know, has a resubmit on this?
DPW has a resubmit. Now, just, I wanted to bring to the commission's attention, SC Miners, the project engineers, and they have met with Scott actually a day or so before he released his comments. Obviously, they certainly didn't have enough time to act on them, but there was a long discussion, a very long meeting between them where they talked about basically everything on here. So they have very, we definitely have a very good definite direction about what we need to do in order to address those comments.
All right. There were a number of comments, I think from DPW also, on some of the traffic issues, and then our traffic consultant, Beta, had some issues on the traffic. I just have a couple of other questions in addition to theirs, and that is, they show all kinds of turning radiuses for an SU-30...
Yes.
...vehicle. Get that in the garage? Is that not going in the garage with the heights I see?
We were talking about that. I mean, we don't think that's... I think we did show that on the plan though, didn't we?
You did show turning movements forward.
Showed the turning movements on the plan.
But the fact is, it's sort of in back, in back one of the...
I think what we wanted to do was show that if it had to be done, it was possible, I guess.
But I... Well, let me ask it as a question. Is the ceiling height in the garage adequate for the SU-30 truck to go in?
No, so it's not going to go in there. So that does away with that issue, I think.
Does, to agree. Except just the handling of trash and things like that. I don't know how that's...
We still have to make a payment.
Well, the trash, I think we discussed at the meeting, I know, and so we were originally going to leave a container outside, and then that was taken off the table. I think what the plan was is to have interior trash collection, then wheel that out as necessary.
Will that be done by maintenance or personnel?
Management.
Management personnel?
Yes.
Okay. And then where will they take it? All right, so these are just questions. We don't need answers tonight because we know you're going to be coming back.
Yes, no, that's, which is part of what I was going to finish up the presentation with. But to finish up, yes, you know, we didn't meet a bunch with engineering, and we do have a definite direction about handling, how to handle those things. Switching over to the sewer department, I think there's an email in your file from Rich that we had gotten a copy of...
We got it yesterday.
...who confirmed that sewer service was certainly possible. It's a question about how we actually, how the connections actually go, which we would certainly work out with the sewer department in the normal course. Insofar as the traffic is concerned, I guess I just wanted to highlight, in terms of your consultant's report, it did state that there was no change in level of service in the three nearest intersections. I knew it did question the sightlines, particularly at the Soundview entrance. It's an awkward entrance, given that the topography of the road, you can only go so far. When you look one way, the road stops and the hill is there. I think we...
Well, they were also saying it conflicted, and Richard mentioned the same thing yesterday, that it conflicts with three of the parking spaces. The SU-30 truck use of the proposed Soundview driveway requires awkward maneuvering and potential conflicts with parking spaces seven, eight, and nine. And that's one of the, that was the comment.
Yes.
But I think if they're taking that off the table...
We're taking that off, yeah, exactly, because the height's not big enough. It doesn't make any sense to have the SU-30 go down.
Then, you've made the mountable curb, so that's not a problem. And then the site distance issue, you're saying that there's not much that can be done about it?
I would submit that's the case. I didn't see any comment from Scott in the site distance report. We can ask the engineer if they discussed it at the meeting that they had with Scott, but I didn't see it in his report, and I would defer to them, but I would say that there's always so much you can do given that intersection.
And then could you take a look at this comment that they make about the table?
You know, table, I looked at that several times, and I'm still a little confused about it.
I didn't understand it either, but they say that it's misleading.
I almost, sorry.
So if you could just take a look at it, it may be that it's just a communications...
Yeah, I almost took it, I read it several times, and I actually came out, I almost thought that it might be misleading, and they were trying to point out that, in fact, the trips, you know, that there's less current than, and more proposed, but it's a difference of two. You know, so it's, I don't know in what way is misleading.
I think there was also some discussion that we had yesterday about the sidewalk around this property.
Oh, the sidewalk.
So you've solved it.
Well, I guess, we'd like to, the opportunity to work that out with Scott. I guess, what we had talked about internally was the fact that, we don't mind putting a sidewalk on the Fieldpoint roadside, but the fact, the fact is, is that they, DPW's requesting a seven-foot sidewalk. We were expecting more of a five, more in line with what we did at Railroad Avenue when we had...
What's the width of the sidewalk in front of Town Hall?
And then you have the two-foot snow shelf, though?
Yes.
The green strip.
Yeah, well, I guess...
I think that's what adds to seven.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, wouldn't it be paved seven?
Yeah, they want that, that's what I...
What, seven wide?
They want seven wide and the snow shelf, so I think that was...
Nine.
Yes, I think so, so that was, I think, a problem for us. So maybe there was a miscommunication there. It's really five plus two equals seven, but we would...
All right, well, that's something you can work out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But before coming back?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we're going to be, yeah, we're going to go and have more discussions with Scott between now and the 16th, when we would anticipate being back anyway.
16th of...
May.
May.
May, yeah, yeah. Yeah, what we'd like to do while we're here is ask permission to go to ARC in May 2nd, on May 2nd, in the May 2nd meeting, so that we would prepare it before ARC in the 2nd and then come back to you on the 16th.
Yeah, it's the May 2nd.
I'm sorry, May 3rd, May 3rd.
Before you go to ARC...
Yes.
I mean, you just kind of put this on the table here today. We haven't looked at it. I think Mr. Couture should look at it, and I definitely think, I'd like to have a review and a comment from the building department about that egress to make sure that we're going in the right direction and we've got that set.
Okay.
Also, interesting, I think you missed the ARC deadline already.
No, ARC, we've been, we've had a pending application since it was filed shortly after this, so we actually, we expected to be on in April, but because there was a delay in coming before you, we couldn't make the April application. So we have one pending. What we do between now and immediately after this actually would be to supplement the ARC application files to have this new design. And it's a relatively small change, given the scope of construction that's going on.
Where are all the mechanicals?
I'm just sort of curious for a second, but are you okay with that? To allow them to go to ARC?
I think we should, I think it should be checked out first before, because if there's an issue at the building department or Mr. Couture's got an issue, they may have to redesign, and then we're kind of looking at a couple, they're going to look at a couple of different act of forth kind of thing, and I'm just, it would be best to make sure that what's proposed is correct before you move on.
I think they could, from what I, from what I understand, their solution is going to be on the CEO's biggest concern, I think, which was the roof. It sounds to me like a logical solution to it, and as far as I'm concerned, I do believe it meets the intent.
What I would offer is that when we discussed it with Mr. Couture, and he was okay with the false roof, if he was okay with that workaround, that he should certainly be agreeable, and we can confirm this, I can submit to staff confirmation, but I would venture to say that he'd be comfortable with a full build-out of space underneath the roof if he was okay with the false roof.
Well, as you say, sometimes we get to interpret our own regulations, too.
Certainly, certainly.
Mr. Bristol, quick question.
Yes.
How many bedrooms are in those three buildings out there already?
What do we, I know there's 16 dwelling units. Do we know how many?
There's three bedrooms in each one.
Well, there's three bedrooms proposed for each one, so there's, so they're all three-bedroom units as proposed.
There's 16 units, that's 48.
No, no, there's 12 units proposed for three bedrooms each, so there's 36 bedrooms proposed. I didn't go back and count all the existing bedrooms.
Do you know how many cars are out there now?
Existing, I'm sorry.
Sorry? How many cars are out there now?
I don't know. I could ask the principal, the client.
Actually, that had come up, come up in the staff, in the briefing yesterday, that somebody wanted a full bedroom count. I guess it was Nick, since he just raised it, so maybe we...
I actually was there, I didn't, I didn't pick that up.
Well, it was one of the things we talked about, but it's relevant because you have three buildings now that use different driveways, and now you're proposing to put all the cars going out of one driveway, for the most part, for the people that live there and the...
Yeah, 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 exactly, which is a draft part of the traffic report.
Right, so it's relevant in terms of how many, so if there's only 20 existing bedrooms, that's a big difference between 20 and the 36, so that's...
We'll count up the bedrooms. We'll count up the bedrooms. Again, I would rely on our traffic report, which shows a no-level service change and only a two-trip, I think, increase. And we can get that information, too.
I do see that you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Where are the mechanicals for the units?
That would be a combination of rooftop, rooftop units that we haven't really determined yet exactly, and mechanical rooms in the garage level.
And what is the storage closets on the roof for?
Storing outdoor furniture, cushions.
One of my comments was a landscape plan, but I see that you've got one, so...
Yeah, we did, it's, we submitted, I don't know where...
We understand that you submitted it and we didn't get it, so...
We'll give you, we'll give you another one. Obviously, it's, it's part of the ARC files anyway, so they won't be reviewing it, but we'll submit one.
Are you anticipating that all the, when you get to construction, right down the road, that everything is going to be done on-site? There's no spillover into any of the streets? And it's a little bit tight, you're putting a lot of things in there.
I don't, I mean, I don't see why we would, why we would do...
We're going to ask for...
We do have a phasing plan, we did submit a phasing plan as well as part of our engineering set.
Didn't see that.
Didn't see that.
Mr. Bristol, what sheet was that on? Six.
Any other comments from the commission?
So is the...
Well, I think, I think the sidewalk issue, they have to address it, and I think the matter of whether the sidewalk goes down Sound Beach or Sound, Soundview.
I can tell, we even talked about this, I think, I think we talked, we saw a bit of futility in it when we, when we had the pre-meeting with DPW because of the reasons that were discussed at the briefing yesterday and the fact that it doesn't go anywhere now, and then to cross, you'd have to cross a very awkward point in the street, so...
Well, I don't think you'd want to cross in the middle of that hill.
Right.
And I think that was, that was the ultimate point of question, because is the sidewalk going to extend down further? Because if it's not, then, to your point, you can't cross it, there's no point in putting one in on this property.
No, but I think they should create the green space for, that will allow a future sidewalk if the town chose to add one.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, the distance from the last wall to the edge?
I think the distance from their property line to the curb line is quite a bit coming up the hill.
That's all I'm saying, is they need to have enough, that's seven foot.
Would seem like is, I think they've marked, you can kind of see it. It's hard to see it there. It seems like there's almost 10 feet between...
Yeah, there's more than enough space if there needs to be a future sidewalk there, so...
Yeah, you're going to have more trouble on Fieldpoint.
We'll agree to leave that space because we already have it.
I'm just curious, are there any other sidewalks in this area that are seven feet wide on either side of the street or that?
I don't think so. I think there is, no, I think they're all five feet, as far as I can say. There's a, there's a weird transition, I think, from the Town Hall one into the, into the Fieldpoint one, but I don't know of any other that are as wide as the seven feet that they're calling it.
I'm just curious, do you know what the dimension of the sidewalk is in front of Town Hall?
It's five.
Five?
Seven. It's seven feet.
So it is seven in front of Town Hall?
It's seven feet in front of Town Hall, correct, but I don't know of anywhere else where it's also...
Well, you'll resolve that with DPW.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, attorney John Harness, 1111 Summer Street, Stanford, Connecticut. I represent the property owners on Soundview Terrace. Soundview Terrace abuts this property immediately in the rear, and three of my clients' properties immediately abut the subject premises, and my remaining clients' own properties across the street from the properties that immediately abut this proposal. The reason I'm up here speaking tonight is to ask for an extension of the public comments with regard to this application, and here's why. We've been in negotiations with the property owner and the developer to resolve some deed restriction issues, and we don't have a signed agreement yet, and I'm working with attorney Sam Bush, who's representing the current property owner and the developer, Rick Silver, who's here tonight. And we don't have yet a response to our final changes to the agreement. We're waiting for those, but one of the items that we've insisted on is strict compliance with the zoning regulations without seeking any variances. And when I went to the briefing session yesterday, we were surprised to learn that a plan was submitted that didn't comply with zoning, specifically Section 6-127D. And there was a lot of discussion about that yesterday, and that the plan as proposed did not comply with the intent of the regulation. And so we have not yet seen any revised plans, and we also understand from the briefing session yesterday that there are other items that are open, such as the number of bedrooms in the current three homes that exist on the property, and there's some other open questions that you mentioned tonight. So before we address any issues, we would like to see the final, you know, the details of these items worked out. So we would like to respectfully request an extension of the public comment to this application.
Well, the applicant, we will leave this item open this evening. The applicant is in the, in a month approximately, we will have another, in a month, Katie?
Yes.
We'll have another hearing. At that time, all of the issues that have been discussed, hopefully, will have been worked out.
And then we, or myself, on behalf of my clients, would have the opportunity to speak.
Well, we will, we'll have another hearing, just like the one we're having tonight, before we close this item, so that will be, I forgot it already, March 16th or May 16th?
May 16th, and there's a, there's a third one in May also.
Okay, well, they said, they said they would be ready on that one on the 16th, so if that's the case.
Yeah, we'll have to see how it goes with the other applications, but it seems at this point it would work, but depends on when the materials come in and...
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? If there are no other comments, I think we'll leave this one open. Are you okay with them or not yet?
Not yet. I think actually we, just having the, my thoughts checked out, and if you could actually count the bedrooms, that'd be great, because I think it actually, that relates to the traffic in terms of how many bedrooms are in the house, those houses, how many cars are parked there.
Yeah, no, certainly, I'd already...
My concern is letting them go to ARC, that's my concern. The other things we...
I would think actually, I would think it would actually be up to staff because it's, I mean, we're just getting plans now, right, you know, tonight, and if, you know, if staff can accommodate them at ARC, that works. If they've missed the deadline or whatever, it's a different story, but...
You're all right if it gets worked out.
Yeah, we have a pending application.
Yeah, they have a pending application. The next meeting would be in June, which would obviously, obviously push everything else out, and we would need an extension to get this back on.
We really got to get on, we really have to get, I mean, we have a pending application, really need to get on May 2nd. It's a very easy, it's a very self-evident change that we did. And again, what I can provide staff with was that confirmation that Jody agrees.
Well, since we haven't seen any of this yet, perhaps you could provide it to staff, and if any of the commissioners want to take a look at it, you know, we can take a look at it and see if that's, but as it's been described, it seems...
And I will discuss it with Jody as well and get you, his reaction as well.
Okay, and get his.
Now, I think at the meeting yesterday when we were discussing this, because I think you were on the agenda at one point for ARC, and then it came off.
Yes, because we were delayed by a meeting to come here for the first time.
Because you didn't submit the materials, that's right. So, so the, so it had been on, it had previously been on a meeting, and then it got postponed...
It was taken, yeah, it was taken off that ARC agenda.
On planning and zoning due to, due to just, you know, materials coming in and whatnot, so...
Assuming that it is going to be done.
But the agenda has not been posted yet for the, for the, for the May 3rd meeting. Is it May 3rd? Yeah, May 3rd.
Correct.
But assuming that meeting is on, okay, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's okay for them to proceed?
I have no problem with them proceeding, just wanted to make sure that Nick was okay with that.
Staff is okay with that, yes.
Okay. All right, we'll leave it open?
Thank you.
Do we need an extension from you?
No, this is a must-open.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Neil Alexander, I'm a partner at the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, here tonight on behalf of Fisk for this application, which many of you, for 63 Church Street, have, may have seen before, depending upon your tenure on the board. This application received final site plan and special permit in the R6 zone in May of 2014. What we're looking to do, Fisk is the new owner of the property, is very much derivative of what was approved in 2014 by your board. The existing condition is that in the front, there's a three-bedroom house, and in the rear, there's an office building, in, which is a sort of a...
Sir, please talk into my ear. I'm not sure if this mic is on.
It is.
It is, okay. Oh, there you go.
Sorry, I apologize.
You can take that out of its holder.
Yeah, I think that'll make, will make it easier for me. I appreciate that. So obviously, with three years on an approval, we started moving a little faster once we got control of the property. We had looked at a prior iteration for the property, and unfortunately, that didn't work out. As a result, we applied to your board, we're in the fourth ward, so we applied to the HDC, we applied to the ZBA to reissue a series of variances that were granted in February of 2017. A lot of this is, I think, is detailed by staff in the, in the report that they provided to you. Since submitting in February of 2017 simultaneously to all three boards, we got a little bit out of order in where we went. First, we went to the PZBA to talk about the prior variances. They were generally comfortable with where we were headed, but of course, wanted to hear where the P&amp;Z Commission and the HDC were going with this project. where the P&amp;Z Commission and the HDC were going with this project. And we went, we were in front of the HDC the other night, which is the most, I'd say, different aspect of this, is that the three-bedroom house here is going to become a two-bedroom multifamily unit. This four, this office space, which was approved for four units before, will still be four units of one bedroom. So the number of bedrooms are actually coming down by one. What's really changing here is we're going from a colonial cladding with a gambrel roof to a mansard design, which is based upon a couple of the houses on Williams and a couple of the houses on Church Street. As you know, if you've been down Church Street, there's quite a bit of different architectural styles and a range of flares. Also here, by the way, with me tonight are Dan Collins from HEC Hudson Engineering and Richard Heine, who is from Richard Heine Architects, who is with me. And I'm looking for the Architectials, which are on Richards. So that really is the essence here of this application's difference, as I try and get there, is the going from the gambrel roof to the mansard roofing, which, Richard, if you'll, yeah. So what informed us here was we were looking at Church Street, and what we looked to do was to move the massing to the rear of the property. If you're familiar with 59 Church Street, which is the big blue building, which is right next to our property, that's a three-story building all the way across, we said, why don't we see if we can slim out a little bit of the front building and move the massing to the back where it would be behind 59 Church Street and against their parking area as opposed to up against if we kept the massing in the front? So that's essentially what we did. This is 59 Church. This is the front smaller building. This is, this is what was the barn-esque structure. It's actually cinder block with poured concrete in it, and it just gussied up to have a gambrel roof and had a weather vane on top. It's not actually, and never was, an actual barn feature.
Are you tearing down the walls of that existing building?
So what, the barn, the barn building, we're looking at trying to save what we can. It's, the, the front part of the house suffered a lot of water damage, so, and some of these structures are pretty old, that when you get into it, our intention is not to demolish them, it's to adaptively reuse what we can. We just don't know what we're gonna find as we go through the process.
Well, clearly, clearly you could not save the roof.
Correct.
So then the point would be, are you saving any of the first floor?
The footprint's gonna be identical. I think the hope would be to--
Because the window pattern certainly is not the same.
Right, and you have a lot of, you have a lot of masonry as the basis as opposed to a stick build. So I don't know how much there is to really save.
Except your variance.
Well, except they're with the ZBA now, and that's, I think they're getting variances for everything, because their existing variances run out.
Right.
Right. We're asking, but our design essentially is identical in the variances that we need and the extent to which we need it. Plus, instead of needing state building code and state fire marshal code variances, we don't believe we'll need that anymore because our intention's to sprinkle to the building.
Well, the other, I mean, what Mr. Fox was referring to, I think, is that if you tear down this building, even to the foundations, all of your non-conformities as far as the zoning commission disappear. So you'll have to be applying to the, to the zoning Board of Appeals--
With that intent.
We, we have applied to them to essentially reissue the prior variances, based upon the new plan, because what we did was we worked with the same footprint.
Are they aware that you're going to be removing these walls?
Uh, we haven't gotten into that issue as to, as to the, how the method of construction was gonna occur.
I guess, I guess what they would be doing though, sorry, Katie, did you leave us?
She's in the back.
No.
Well, anyway, all of the, if you did, in fact, I guess it's primarily just yard variances that we are dealing with here in terms of being able to rebuild on the existing foundation.
There's, the FAR is not increasing. The green area is not, not changing. We've brought in lid in order to handle stormwater, which doesn't exist now, nor in the 2014 plan that was approved. So we've tried to, you know, make it a 21 cent--
But I have to tell, you know why, you know what I'm saying? I mean, your zoning 2014, the zoning Board of Appeals approval--
Yes.
--has gone.
Well, we timely sought a reissuance of that approval, and, I mean, I don't want to get into the case law in Connecticut as far as, I mean, what's the distinguishing material intervening change that would allow the ZBA not to be bound by its prior precedent?
I don't know.
I don't think that, I mean, obviously, our position is there isn't any.
I'm just sort of cur--
The comment is, and our board has been very consistent, that the structure comes down, you should not have, where's your hardship? Your hardship for the variances, you have an existing structure.
Well, I think--
And so, but the prior approvals kept the structures. And so I think it's, we just want you to be very clear with ZBA, that in order to do this, you cannot keep the structure. And I think that, you know, it's imperative that you're upfront with them, because they're the ones that grant the variances. You also have overhangs that I don't know from the state building code if you're allowed to have, because you have to have five foot clear to the building. So there are a bunch of things that surfaced in the last time when we heard this. So, and we've seen this many times.
And I, yes, we've reviewed the file extensively. We know you're very familiar with it. Our intention was very simple. It was to take the existing approval and do similar or a little bit better. And we believe that's what we've done here. We believe that the architecture fits in with what's, what's in the surrounding area. The building's actually gets slightly smaller.
Please remember, though, is that the eight variances that you're looking to have quote reinstated are based on what's existing out there now. And if it's the intent of having them reinstitute those variances based on new site development, you know, I think you're kind of going in the wrong direction, because the approvals that you're looking for to be reinstituted are based on buildings that are being altered significantly. And I for one would be concerned that we're looking at an application right now that is requiring eight variances. If for one reason, one of these variances doesn't go through, it doesn't seem to give a viable project.
A couple of different things on that note. I mean, while, I think I want to leave the ZBA their jurisdiction over a project as appropriate. I think also, I think you're, there's a little too much discounting, in my opinion, based upon the jurisprudence in the state of Connecticut as to the fact that you, these variances were granted previously. And therefore, these variances run with the land, and there's an expectation and a vested right in them being reissued unless there's a significant change in law or fact. And I don't, I don't see that. We could argue that, but I think I probably will have to have that conversation with the ZBA since it's their jurisdiction anyhow. You know, the interesting part is I am kind of caught a little bit back on my heels by some of the comments and surprised a little bit, because we had a really favorable conversation with the HDC. And that's who we really thought would have the most concern with this project, being in the fourth ward and changing the architecture from the cladding, colonial cladding, and from the barn-esque aspects, that, to the, to the mansard Queen Anne. I mean, essentially, what you have here is, in the massing studies here, is showing how you're slimming the front building by about 20%. You're increasing the front yard by about three feet by making the porch smaller. I think we've done, you know, ultimately, you need, there's only one way you're going to get reinvestment here, and it requires it to be something different, you know, in the sense of honoring the prior approvals. You have a reasonable reliance upon them after doing your due diligence, that there's no real reason not to reissue the approvals, and--
I, I hear what you're saying. My, my comment is if you tear the building down, why couldn't you meet at least the side yard setback?
And legally, I think--
I think that's almost impossible. I have a 48-foot wide building. I mean, what, building lot.
Right, but I'm saying is, if all the other variances stay in place, we're talking about, if you're tearing down the wall, what's the big deal of shrinking your building by a foot and a half?
I'm gonna let the, yeah, I'm gonna let Richard talk to--
I mean, and, and I'm just being hypothetical here that--
I mean-- Fair, fair enough, and I definitely defer to you, Richard, as the architect, on that aspect. I mean, we can keep the first floor, the first floor. I mean, I, I don't want to, given the issue, we can accommodate that. I don't want to get in there after the fact when we're at building permit, you don't know what's behind the wall till you're behind the wall.
But when you, when you say material change, what would you, if, if tearing down a building is not a material change, what would you constitute a material change?
Well, when I look at the community character, I don't think it's a material change to build, to essentially put the investment into rebuilding a structure in a way that's, that when it's done, is no different than what's there. I, you know, we look at, it's gonna sit relative to the front, rear, and side yards essentially the same as it always has. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So the final product, if you could just do a before and after photo, you're gonna have a three-foot bigger front yard, you're gonna have a smaller footprint of buildings, minuscule amount, and you're gonna have a bigger volume building where the volume is back from the road and behind the front building. And you're going to have had investment on a piece of property that hasn't seen any redevelopment in, do we go five or 10 years? So in order to get the investment and get the economic development, you need to do something here. The prior approvals on that property sat and weren't enough to induce that development. We're trying to meet the marketplace and, and meet the investment, and we're coming up with a product that is identical or slightly better in almost every fashion than what was previously approved. So when you, so if you're, if you're an investor, you're looking at the property and you're saying, well, I have these 2014 approvals, I got ahold of the building, I'm coming to the community, I'm looking to build almost identical, except I'm changing the architecture to another style that's informed by the area.
That's a curious thing, so I'm just wondering if, to make your point better, maybe you would want to try to keep in the style of what's existing as opposed to changing it, which, the change has nothing to do with what's there. So if you're trying to preserve something, this is an historic district, and the, my thought is that you try to emulate what is there, not completely change it. That is, so I don't know if that, I don't know if that really confuses your argument or not, but it confuses me.
Okay, so let me, let me try and address that issue. It's a great point. So, and we can submit these, we did a little bit of community character study, I can walk past, but let me just make the point first. This is the auto repair shop next to us.
Yep.
And the industrial uses as you, and, sorry, the commercial uses as you head towards William Street. Going to the other side of us is a three-story building with significantly bigger size. That's the blue building that's 59, and there's the front of our building. As far as architectural styles, there's not much that we can say without me being cavalier about it. So I'm going, I'm going down the street, I'm going down the street, I promise. This is 59 Church Street. It's kind of boxy, and that's the best I think I can say about it. It's not really much of a particular style or laudatory about it. You got the reinvestment that occurred at 55 Church Street, where they basically turned the building, sort of like we did, to read a little narrower, somewhat colonial, I would say, in its, in its feel. You then get down to the Nantucket, which is sort of multifamily on top of podium of parking at grade. Again, we're, I'm not seeing a predominant style. Behind, then you get down towards the corner, next to the multi, the brick 1960s, I'd say, era, six or seven story, you have a new single-family house that picked up on the brick. Again, there's no real--
This is what's confusing.
There's no community character to begin with.
You're, you're trying to create something by looking at the neighborhood, and there's, and, but that has little to do with why this was made a historic district.
Well, it actually is not a historic overlay. We're in the fourth ward, we're part of the National Fourth Ward, it's not an HO.
I didn't say it was, it's a historic district. So that style has nothing to do with the area. And, but what does, but what does have something to do with the property is what's existing there, which is clavbered and is colonial. And to me, I'm just saying it again, it seems to confuse your, your argument to me. And you may want to reconsider how you approach that. I don't think that, I understand the academics of what you're doing, looking to the neighborhood and looking for things to pull out of it, but I don't think in this case it's helping you.
It's interesting, because the HDC resoundingly was comfortable and liked it. And, and it was based upon two different Queen Anne's that, in mansards that were in the area, that, that we based it on, and I'm just, I'm trying to reconcile.
Just a comment.
I mean, there, no, no, I'm not trying to be argumentative. Like I said, I was candid at the outset, saying we foresaw them having more of a challenge. Did you want to talk to some of those, Richard? Please, that'd be great.
Richard Heine, I'm the architect. I think there really are two factors at play here. I think it's of note that the HDC was particularly unimpressed with the gambrel-style quote-unquote barn. Their, their comments, I think, were consistent with our observations, which is that the, the barn was never a barn. It's a masonry building with steel frame. It may have been an auto repair shop or something like that, that at some point was sort of gussied up to look like a dairy barn, but it was in fact never a barn. So they were, I would say, rather enthusiastic that that structure would be reconfigured. Specifically about that building, however, in practical terms, it's, it's not a building that you would want to renovate for residential use, specifically because of the thickness of the masonry, the existing masonry walls. But in fact, if it, if the approvals hinged on preserving more or less of that structure, you know, architecturally, we could accommodate that, and we could preserve the, at least the first story of that structure.
I think that's a stronger argument for your redevelopment.
Okay. That's something--
Just more consistent.
Yeah, thank you. But I would, would like to point out, in agreement with what Neil pointed out, that the gambrel itself was particularly distasteful in the eyes of the HDC, if I can quote them. It was never a barn, it's sort of a concrete, sort of approximation of a barn. So they were, I would say, reiterating, very happy to see that go. It's a slightly different argument when you come to working with the, the front structure. Just to add one more detail to what Neil had pointed out, that in all cases, the buildings that we're proposing are either smaller than or equal to in footprint, but in all cases, our buildings are lower than the previously approved proposition, which had been granted the approvals. So we've lowered the height in all of our proposed structures. One of the ways we were able to do that was with the mansard, because when we remove the peak off of a gable, we can sort of curtail the height of the building and give a more palatable floor-to-ceiling in the actual apartments. But we could, in fact, without too much impracticality, preserve the first and possibly some of the second story of the frame house, because the frame construction would be compatible with our new proposal. So I think those might help in reviewing the application. I think, Neil, you might want to pick up on those and see if that's consistent with what has occurred in the past on the applications. I think that's it.
Well, I think on this, though, the, since you're going for zoning Board of Appeals, was the approval on the 14, in 14, given on a re-- was the approval on the 14, in 14, given on a reuse of that building, or was it given on a tear-down of that building and rebuilding as you're proposing now?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm sorry.
It was not a tear-down. The front building was going to stay, and the rear building, the barn building, was going to be converted into the four units from an office, so there was no demolition proposed.
Okay.
Of, you know, exterior, it was interior.
Right, I just, I don't know what, whether the work on the barn to convert it to residential, given the thickness that Richard, I don't know if it ever got to that stage. I'll defer to you, I didn't see anything in the file about that.
Right, it was not going to be-
That can't be a major thing. These are not 20-inch masonry walls in that, I'm sure of that.
No, they're not.
Okay.
There was a question in last application, because when you convert to the four, to the four units, you have to have two forms of egress and egress, so there was a question about what would happen in the rear, because there's really not very much room. I believe it was the rear, yeah, because there's not very much room. So, the question was, if there was an exit there, would the building official, the state building official, allow any variance of space in that area? Because, because it wasn't going to be demolished, and it was going to be in existing condition converting from office to residential.
And certainly, these uses are, what is required in the windows and so forth when you're this close to a property line? Do you have to have, have to be fire-rated?
Covered by sprinkler.
Or covered on both sides with a sprinkler.
That is our intention, is to sprinkler.
Well, both sides is tricky, because the outside's the outside, so it's dry. They have new things.
They have new heads that go through the wall, so you don't have to split.
So, it's dry until it kicks off inside, then it becomes wet? Okay. I think that needs to be, this whole matter, it's, I think it's changing from what was approved in 14 to what is before us now, and I don't know how to get that clarity to the zoning board of appeals.
And to HGC, because we're struggling a little bit, I think-
Well, HGC doesn't seem to care.
Well, that's the thing. But I think we need to somehow communicate with them that we're not understanding their position on this.
Well, I mean, it was also, in exchange for the facade easement, effective, and the rezoning from the LBR2 to the R6, this commission and the zoning board of appeals ultimately approved the variances and the site plan approval for the units. But now that the building's not going to be there anymore, and it's starting anew, and, you know-
There's no facade to-
To preserve.
But I think we're getting caught up on the facade easement, because it's not a facade easement by my, by my reading, by any stretch.
A requirement was, it was a requirement of the past approval, wasn't it?
My reading on that facade easement is very different. It's a regulatory, it's like a note in title. It's basically, because it expressly says that in contemplates demolition in the facade easement. It just says that if you're going to demolish, you have to come back to the P&amp;Z and the HGC. So, I don't read it-
Right, because then the deal changes.
I'm sorry.
The deal would change, because the deal was, you give the facade easement and you get the units. So, if the facade is going to change, then-
The facade easement also predated the litigation, right?
The litigation-
It did. The litigation was in 2009.
It was on a previous application, correct.
But the facade easement says very, very clearly in it, where is it says, it talks about no material change unless the owners first obtained a certificate of appropriateness from the HGC and site plan and special permit from the commission pursuant to 617 of the regs. And then it says, what a material change includes, and they talk about raising and demolition and rebuilding modifications. So, I, what I-
I'm looking at the approval letter, and it says, "Any future exterior alterations on either building are subject to HGC and planning and zoning commission approvals." It doesn't say significant, it says any.
Well, we're talking, we're not in disagreement, we're talking about two different aspects. What I'm saying is that, to the director of planning's comment about the easement, I don't see it as a facade preservation easement in the way of a qualifying letter that you can't, like it's like on the why, right? It's different than that. It's, this is a regulatory, this is like a note in title saying, putting people on notice who are buying this property that don't think you can just change things, you're going to need to go through a regulatory review in order to change things.
Anything.
Okay, we can argue over your resolution versus the easement. Let's just stay a little higher, we can get down to that level gladly, in a moment. But the facade easement is saying that a material change, it defines a material change, and it says, "Don't think you're buying this property when you go look in land records and you see this recorded and think that you can have willy-nilly with it just per the zoning code, or the building code." You're gonna need to also go through a regulatory review, which is what, so it's functioned to do what it was supposed to do. As far as your approval, if it said any change versus material change, fine. We're here, we're not arguing over whether you have jurisdiction or not. What I am saying, though, is that prior determinations are a material element to a new determination, in that there has to be a consistency. If there's a deviation, there has to be a reason for the deviation.
But we're telling you what that deviation is, you're taking down the building.
And what we're saying is, is fine, we can keep the first and second floor. Obviously, the roof we're proposing is to change it. But what we're also saying, because I don't want to be less than forthcoming, is that I don't know when, the building suffered a lot of water damage. The building has not been used, the front building. I don't know what's gonna happen when we start peeling everything back, and whether everything is good enough. I also don't know the spacing-
Sir Alexander, we've had this issue before on other projects, where we don't know what's in the wall. And it's gotten to a point sometimes where I've heard, "We don't know what's in the walls," and when they start opening up the walls, "Oh, we have to replace the whole thing," and it becomes a weird de facto tear-down.
Which is what I'm trying to be forthcoming about from the front.
So, I have a question for Mr. Heine. Has the building been inspected? Have you done any interior demolition to see what's damaged? And have you developed a demolition plan yet?
As of yet, no.
Okay. I think that would probably be a really, really good first step, is to find out what's wrong with this building, because if the whole thing's a mess and it's rotten, goodbye. If it's okay, and you can fix it, then we'll know. But I don't want to wait until you actually have the permit, approvals in place, everything's ready to go, and then saying, "Whoa, no, we gotta tear the whole thing down, because it's really rotten."
And if you tear down, you may lose a non-conforming right. So, I know that's a point of discussion, but I'm just saying, you know, I think we do have to be careful here, because it's a non-conforming lot, where when you talk about reinvestment, reinvestment would mean a single-family or two-family property. So, I think we just have to be careful about this conversation.
No, and we're mindful that we filed our application, you know, right on, right on the heels of where the R6 study is going. And we're very mindful of, you know, the last slide at the January 19th public hearing about potential future, and then sort of, now I'm all of a sudden conflating the two and wondering a little bit out loud here. But-
That was a workshop, just a-
Sorry, workshop. In understanding you haven't made any decisions on what to do with the R6 zone, and whether you should treat R6 properties that are in proximity and walkable within 20 minutes of downtowns and train stations differently, but sort of the 20-minute lifestyle that Gerding Edling Development talks about so much, and ULI talks about a lot.
Mr. Alexander, the state, the state building inspector and state fire marshal modification, so the new building presumably wouldn't need any modification.
The way we're, and I don't want to put too many words in Richard's mouth here, he can speak for himself. Our intention is to sprinkler the building and to not need any variances from the state building code or the state fire marshal.
So, the rear building would come in slightly, or so that that second form of egress issue would be gone?
Yes, yes. As well as we will, we'll be using non-combustible material for the exterior cladding, and if necessary, when we get into it, we'll do a non-combustible construction throughout.
So, was there any thought to reducing the number of units so that the parking scenario would be improved, since it is, if it is a tear-down? Why not?
We are already losing one bedroom, so I guess fractionally, as a rounding standpoint, we're, but I'm being too cute and jocular there. You know, the pattern was discussed, we saw all the interaction with the board in the meeting minutes, all the thinking through that went through, that was, went over rather, and covered, and we came back, so.
I think at one point, there was also, there were state modifications that were needed from the state building official due to the handicap parking space and where it was located. So, there was, I don't know if variance is the correct word, but modification or letter from the state on the handicap parking space, given the inability to park enough cars to support the building. So, I'm just wondering, you know, if you're, when you're doing the tear-down and rebuild, the fire code and the building code issues that we've just discussed, those would go away. So, I wonder if this third state modification would go away also, or could go away.
We would have to look into that. I don't know the answer to that. It would be very helpful if you could just send that letter over. That letter somehow I missed in all our file reviews, so I-
It was one of the earlier iterations, so as you know, this file goes lots of-
Yes. No, I mean, I don't want to be seen as being combative here. I mean, we had an expectation based upon our research and understanding. Maybe I put too much into a favorable meeting with the HGC and let myself get out ahead of myself here. But we're willing to try and save it. I mean, the point by the general commissioner before, I also don't want to be seen, it'd be easy just to appease you and say, "We're gonna go," and then on the back end be like, "Oh, it's way worse than we thought," and, you know, that erodes all of our credibility in your community, and that's not what we're about. We have other projects in the community. So, what, you know, we can take a step back gladly, see if and what we can realistically reuse on the first two floors. Obviously, the roofing's different.
I don't think we're challenging. I think that we're saying two things. One, make sure you do your code review with the building department, and make sure there are no other surprises.
Okay.
And full disclosure, when you go into zoning board of appeals, because the variances were granted a couple of years ago for keeping this structure, and you got a lot of them. Parking, coverage, setbacks, height, I mean, you know, so there was some inherent value to keeping the structures. And we're just saying tread lightly on tearing them down, because this commission isn't in the, doesn't have the ability to allow you to build a new building that doesn't conform to our current regulations.
Understood, thank you.
Switching gears, the existing site on your drawing C1 shows a grass area, sizable grass area in front of the existing building, where the covered porch is. Are you looking at C1?
Yes.
Grass. Now, if I look at the development plan, you are paving that over so you can create two parking spaces.
Consistent with the 2014 approval, correct. That's exactly how it was shown on the 2014 approval.
Okay. I just have some problems, though, with the numbers on your lot coverage. If it's existing, that means it's existing. And it seems to me that if it's existing in grass, and then you're, whether it was approved in 14 or not, you're changing it, the number doesn't seem to change. It's exactly the same number, 5827, 5827. So, I think it would help us probably if we had a calculation sheet showing how you derive these numbers. And I don't, if it's there, I missed it.
So, that's, this is, well, this is our green space calculation after Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering, with the engineers for the project. In order to actually make up some of the missed, the lost area due to these two spaces, we actually added more additional landscaping here, and some additional landscaping on the side. We actually added a two-foot-long strip of green space along this area, which with the combination of these three, we're able to offset what we'd lost in the front. And it does add up, don't worry. I triple-checked it.
Well, I'll take your word for it, I guess, but that's, what is it, trust and verify? So, if we could then get the calculation sheets from you showing that-
Sure, absolutely.
To hit the exact numbers.
And then the other thing, too, is this area where we are taking away, and it is gonna be parking, we're gonna make that, that's part of the LID, that's gonna be permeable pavement. So, it's gonna be permeable pavement with two foot of, or one foot of stone relief. So, whatever hits it, it acts as grass, as it is anyway. So, whatever's gonna be on that area is gonna stay on that area up to the 100-year storm, which is more than enough storage.
I appreciate what you're trying to do with the green space, but to have a two-foot strip that goes the length of the lot is not as ideal a solution.
I mean, the only issue is back here, this is actually used partially by the auto body shop. This is actually all paved parking area that is used on this side, so we couldn't really do anything there. I know this is a little bit less desirable, but however, there is, I mean, this is all paved as it is right now, so we would be adding some nice planting space that would divide this driveway up with the neighboring driveway. So, it would be planted nicely, once we get to that phase.
I assume you haven't talked about impervious paving?
Yeah, that was the front, two parking spaces, those are gonna be permeable pavement. So, that's where the LID comes in.
Whether that's the case or not, this commission considers that lot coverage, as opposed to grass, which is not lot coverage.
Yes, I know, that's, yep.
It's not a drainage issue.
No, no, absolutely, I know. That's just, I was just adding, that's an added bonus.
Okay.
And sorry, just before we leave that topic, and just so there's no confusion when we're talking about green space, we're talking about actual green grass, because there is a green area regulation, which applies in the R6, but not in the multifamily. So, multifamily, it's lot coverage and building coverage, so just so, I know it's confusing, but we're talking about needing 50% of the lot can be covered, not the 65%, which should be the green space. So, just saying, we're talking about the right regulation here.
Mr. Man, before we move on from this, do you have a drawing that shows the relationship of the building and the driveway next door, where you're putting the green space? I'm looking at a street view here, and it seems that it's paved from facade to facade. I'm kind of concerned, I'm not really understanding where the green space is.
On our, hold on, let me put this down real quick. An RC3, which is our, I mean, our RC3, it's the site, our site plan that we put together. Essentially, everything that's not hatched or labeled as building is a green space area. So, this build, this solid hatch that we have coming up, that is actually asphalt pavement, that's not permeable. There's, the two-foot grass strip comes along the side, and that actually continues along back. And then this is gonna be untouched in the back here. There is, we have the green space here, and we've added, since we've pulled this front porch back, we were able to add some additional green space in front of the covered porch as well, to add some shrubs or some bushes there. And then this existing area here remains, which would be grass, or I guess whatever the landscape architect decides to put there.
Just as an example, it might look, it might be nice to have the green, some green strip along the side of the building, as opposed to on the property edge.
Where, over here?
No, no, on the front building.
Here?
Instead of having, you have a two-foot strip on the edge there. If there was, if you put a strip along the side of the building there, on the opposite side of the drive-
Oh, on this side?
Yeah.
There is actually a small strip there. We could shift that over if we need to add some additional space.
Maybe that's a better way of blocking your green space.
Sure. That's not an issue. We can adjust it if it's necessary.
Do you share the curb cut with the building next door?
Right now, it's one paved all the way across, but no, it's two separate curb cuts. They have their own curb rut, and we have our own curb cut. It's just one continuous right now.
next-door neighbor's going to be driving on this two-foot, two-foot green space a lot.
No, no, they have, I'm not sure what the dimensions at is, it's probably about nine to 10 feet between that green space and the edge of their building to the back.
It's a very tight space.
It's very, very tight. And I'm wondering if the green space is even viable in reality, based on what's actually out there in the field. That would be probably a good idea, maybe go out there and kind of measure this up and see if, when you put the green space down where you have intended, what's left over for the driveway next door? And is that going to have an impact on the property next door?
I mean, what we could do, as you were saying before, if we were able to swap, I might be able to shift the driveway or end all of our parking over closer towards this property line. So this is all paved here, and then I could add some additional landscaping in this area. I might have to work with it, because we do need the parking for this application. So it is difficult to get rid of those in the front. I understand that. I know that's, needs to be agreed, it looks like it's nice, it needs to be green space, but for this application, we need those spaces. So I can see what I can do.
You could move those two parking spaces in front further south as a result of doing that.
And then add some green space here. And Neil, I don't know if this is, because this is our property along the auto shop here. I mean, we can make that entire area green space if we need to, because it is on our property. But that would be something to discuss with the neighbors, obviously. We'd be more than willing to sit down with staff and talk about landscaping. That's not a, that's not a problem at all.
Just a minor issue. On the building height, since it came up earlier that you're reducing the height of the buildings, the measurement of building height is to the highest part of the structure, which would be the top of those mansard towers, not to the flat part of the, the drawings don't show that.
Yeah, there is actually, we've indicated that on.
Well, let me put it this way, the drawings I have don't show that.
Okay. Very good. We'll clarify that.
Okay.
This may be something that we don't want to get involved in a big conversation about this now, and perhaps Mr. Alexander could address it in between now and the next meeting. But I am, if you could, either now or later, discuss section 6-141B2C.
Can I do that again, one more time?
It's 141B2C. And this is a section that just deals with when you have a non-conforming building in use, and it talks about when you can make an addition or alteration to it. And it says, "When a building in any residential zone is razed and rebuilt in one or more steps utilizing an existing foundation, the new structure should be constructed only on that portion of a foundation within lawful setback." So I assume you're taking down any foundation, so that's a question as to how that's going to work. And then, "When a building that is less than 50 years old or is otherwise not eligible to qualify for placement on the National Register of Historic Places, and a residential zone is substantially improved as defined in section 6-5A49.1, that building must conform to the current provisions of the Building Zone Regulations pertaining to required yards, height, number of stories, and floor area ratio." So when you're dealing with these non-conformities and then you're tearing them down, the legal analysis in the state of Connecticut as to how one can maintain rights other than use when you're demolishing a building, I think, is the legal question.
It was further mentioned that.
Just on that, I do think that, you know, initially, it's all subject to obtaining variances. If you obtain the variances, then it's not the P&amp;Z's commission's jurisdiction on that issue. So the question is, the question that might be is, maybe I need more variances. But I think this is, this is saying that if you're non-conforming, if you're legally non-conforming, and then you do massive alteration, you probably lose your legal non-conforming status, at which point you either have to conform or obtain a variance. And that's my initial read on it. I'll take a look at it. But also, you know, ultimately, remember, a ZBA is a quasi-judicial board, as opposed to legislative or an administrative board. It has, its jurisdiction is limited and so forth. And because it's quasi-judicial in nature, it is bound by its own prior precedent. And therefore, particularly not only, I mean, it's one thing to distinguish between two different properties, it's another thing to try and distinguish between the same property with the same ask. It's a pretty.
But you have a change in the facts if you raise the building, so the precedent would not necessarily.
We haven't said we're raising the building yet, either.
Well, you haven't not said that.
Well, I think if you're not going to raise it, that would require you to resubmit drawings showing different wall thicknesses and so forth, and how you intend to pierce the walls and that kind of stuff. So at least that the quality of the drawings would support the facts that you're making.
As I said before, we did not anticipate the response we've received tonight based upon prior meetings we've had with other boards, including the ZBA and the HDC. So, so far, the other two boards were of a different mindset than the comments we've received tonight, so we're a little bit surprised by it. And we're listening to you, and we're not arguing with you in saying we won't do it. We're just sort of saying, we're struggling to deal with why, you know? And when we're hearing you and your concerns, and I'll take a look at these codes, sections of the code, and, you know, ultimately, what we want is a finished product that looks a certain way. How it's constructed, assuming that we can get to the standpoint of comparable construction costs and that they don't provide a hardship in themselves, is a separate issue. And hopefully, we can get there.
I think the, there's a thing called the grade plane analysis that, I think it's a pretty flat site, but that still wasn't submitted, so it is, again, the thing that the height of the buildings is measured against, and it'll become relevant in that matter.
And we owe you a green sheet as well.
Any more comments from the commission?
This is five units?
It is five units, and I think.
So the landscape lighting would be subject to ARC, not HDC?
Yes.
Right. But let's hang on.
It's four new, it's four new units.
Yeah, but let's hold on on that, because I think.
Let's get through.
Yep. I mean, yes, we agree with you.
Is there any comment from the public on this?
I think this, oh, sorry, I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
No, I was going to say, you know, this is, this is also an opportunity to provide one-bedroom multifamily, which is affordability and diversity of housing, which isn't really something that is prevalent.
And have you submitted, did they submit an affordability plan with that?
No, we're not, we're not doing affordable as an A, as in, as a program. I'm just saying, de facto, as a proxy, when you have a diversity of housing stock leads to housing affordability. And you're talking about a product that is not a lot of, a lot of existence in your town.
We agree with that statement, but we can't give you credit for that.
I'm not, I'm not asking for credit. I'm not asking for credit, but as a contemplation of getting rid of multifamily in the R6 as a whole, I think a project like this is something that should be thought about as to how do you get to that diversity of housing stock if you're going to get rid of multifamily in the R6 townwide?
Yep, but we have to balance some other things with that.
No, and I'm not getting into an A-30G analysis, that's not my goal here.
No, no, and we just, in general, have to balance some other considerations with that.
It's a great walkable spot. You can get right to a grocery store, you can get right to exercise, coffee shop, library. It's incredibly walkable, and my guess is it would score in the high 90s on a walk score.
I think we'll leave this one open, then.
Yep, it's fine.
I don't think we need any extensions, we were just having to open it tonight. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
No, we just had to open it tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate the dialogue.
Item number eight, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that for five units under the multifamily, to Mr. Alexander's point, under R6 requires 21,000 square feet of land, where he only has 6,000, or 6,500. Note that.
I expect, that's, that must be one of the variances they'd have to seek.
I remember seeing on the list that the amount of land is so deficient.
Did you ask for public comment on this?
No.
He did.
I said it did.
Who did?
Did you ask for public comment?
I did.
Oh, I didn't remember either.
Nope.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Another very good question. Do you remember if you said it was a good plan or a very good plan?
No.
We weren't even going to start with that tonight.
You put the adjective in there.
I was going to say, I like to think it's a good plan. I'm going to give you a few reasons why, I hope.
No, no, he just said, I'm sorry, he didn't, he said, "It's a good plan worthy of approval." In short, it's a good plan worthy of approval.
Any questions?
You could have led with that and then just saved yourself the paper.
I'd just like to have a little bit of.
I know.
Levity. My name is Tony DeAndrea, and I'm representing North Broadway Development LLC. They are the owners of the property, formerly known as the Garberini property. It's adjacent to Valbella on the east, Staples on the south, and across the street from the Walgreens parking lot and the edge. We have excess land, we are currently supporting a two-family house on the property. They suggested it was probably a two-single-family house. Two single-family houses connected by a breezeway, which is certainly what you see when you go to the site. It's served by a driveway on the, I'm calling the westerly side, enters into a two-car garage and three spaces on the surface. So they have five parking spaces in accordance with the current regulations. There is a sewer serving the property on the eastern side along Valbella. And for those of you who are familiar with the property, big dense arborvitae hedge, double row, in fact, along Valbella to protect Mr. Garberini from Valbella at the time, and a very dense, although somewhat stressed, landscape hedge along the front on Sound Beach Avenue extension. As I mentioned, this site is large enough to support five single fam, I mean, excuse me, five residential units. However, we submitted our application in February for a final site plan and special permit to construct only four, believe it or not, only four units, where we could have proposed five. I just want to touch on the high points of the, of the design. The site rises from the southeast corner up, and around 71, it rises and climbs all the way up to about 90 in the southwest corner. Right now, there are some retaining walls that hold that elevation up around the backside of the existing two-family home. As I mentioned before, the driveway on the western side provides access to the dwelling and provides limited parking. What we're proposing to do is develop the two separate buildings. Each building would have two-car garage. Outside, we would have two parking spaces for each building, thereby having a total of 12 parking spaces, so that each unit has three. The bedroom, the design of the buildings includes a four-bedroom dwelling unit in each side. There's a proposal for a basement family room. First floor is primarily devoted to the garage, kitchen, family room, and dining room. We propose to put the driveway on the westerly side of the, or, excuse me, easterly side of the property in order to provide privacy on the backside of the buildings, which is a residential unit to that, to that side. This protects the, or main, enables us to maintain the dense hedge along Valbella and provides the parking away from.
Isn't that the south side?
Excuse me?
Isn't that the south side?
You can see.
I've been calling it the east to Valbella, south to Staples, west to the residential, and north to the, just for orientation. So we moved it over to the east side, again, to provide access along Valbella and provide the, the privacy on what I'll call the westerly side behind the buildings, because there is a residential use to that side. We have designed the site with porous pavement in accordance with the drainage manual. We've also extended the porous pavement into the parking areas, although it's not necessarily required for the volumes that we need to satisfy the drainage manual. We also have the roof areas coming into the rain garden, and ultimate discharge for excess flow would be to a new drain that would be installed in Sound Beach Avenue extension to connect to the existing town system. We did prepare a plan, submitted it to the highway department for review and comment, but they refused or declined to comment until the commission has made a decision. Previously, at one of our hearings, we discussed how it's difficult sometimes to get department comments in advance, but we did attempt to get that comment to no avail, no big deal. It's feasible, it's been designed, and it can be done. We also posted the tree, the tree warden has posted the tree, a locust tree, somewhat messy. He's posted it for removal.
And the other trees that are mentioned in DPW's report?
I saw DPW, but I didn't notice anything particular other than.
They mentioned three trees.
There are some sycamores to the.
It's, a letter from the tree warden needs to be submitted stating that the proposed drain extension plan is agreeable.
Right.
This is needed because of the close proximity to three trees.
Right. That's, there's some sycamores there shown. And what we've pointed out is that there's already, or has been recently, or more recently than the trees, installed a sanitary sewer line down that shoulder. So I think we're okay there. If it doesn't work, of course, if they have an option, I mean, if they have a problem with that, the option would be to go out into the street, heavily traveled, we prefer not to do that. But that was one of the things we wanted to discuss with the highway department by submitting the plan. So far, we've had no comments on that. But the plan is done, and we're aware of the concern for the trees. We have not yet, to the best of my knowledge, unless it was very, very late.
Today.
Today, got super comments, which are.
Oh, no, sewer was April 13th, and they basically, all of the stuff that they're commenting on can be addressed when you go to permitting.
Right. To that end, we have.
We got conservation today, and they're asking you for a landscaping plan with 30% native and native for the rain garden.
No disagreement there. We had Matt Pop prepare a plan some weeks ago. I don't know whether or not Alexandra saw it in the packet, but it was submitted and has a variety of shade trees, intensification around the rain garden, landscape plants around the foundation, and some densification along the, the Staples side.
It's not in my version.
The commission didn't get to see it.
The commission hasn't seen it. It's not in my package, the landscaping plan. This is the second one that that's happened with tonight, but the guys who get the full plans didn't get them, and the guys who got the reductions didn't get them.
Are these perhaps just being submitted to the ARC, because that's a totally different file than the P&amp;Z file?
What is that, say?
The ARC file is separate and apart from the P&amp;Z file, so I wonder if they've been provided only in the, I'm not, I'm not saying that's the case here, I'm just.
We were conscious of making sure that we got them. Matt did it on March 7th, so I don't know whether or not it got distributed correctly or not, but at any rate, we have a very dense landscaping plan that we'll be glad to meet with Alexandra and discuss.
Yeah, so the only thing outstanding is that you're a, you're a resubmit for DPW.
DPW is, again, unfortunately, while we submitted in February, we have had no chance to see these in context with this Wednesday meeting, so we have requested a meeting. I will say that we reviewed these, got them all highlighted, there's nothing significant, typical of what we would normally do. He has a suggestion of extending more gravel underneath the permeable pavement that we didn't have to use for our design. We have some discussions about things like that. I don't think there's anything major that would prevent us from going forward.
The grade plane calculation that you did, I assume you came up less than three?
Yes, sir, absolutely. One of them was 1.76.
I couldn't read it. It was just, I'm just asking it as a question.
Yes, sir, not a problem. One of them was 2.1, the other was 1.76. What we did was try to meet the grading of that platform at the beginning, or the middle, whatever you want to call it, the front side of the property. We're proposing a first floor of 76, the ground right now is 75. So it's all good.
The, the only thing is that the, that it's not shown on the elevation drawings or on the section drawings, ergo, there's no way to get to the height of the building and so forth, so that needs to be shown.
Yeah, we'll add that to the final to make sure, yes.
You said grade plane, too, right?
He did calculate the grade plane, but I can't read it. I mean, it's, that got reduced to an eight and a half by 11 sheet, and it's impossible to read, but I was just confirming that it's three feet or less.
Yes, sir, definitely less than three.
Go get Scott's approval.
Excuse me?
Go get Scott's approval.
Before I have to come back and waste more of your time?
Yeah.
An email something, he said you had to...
You see...
He says it's a resubmit, we...
I know, I wish he would not do that and at least give us the opportunity, but I just wanna...
Do what you want.
Get out of the soapbox for just a moment. It's unfortunate the way Scott works. He works toward your agenda, and that makes it very difficult for us to sit in limbo for what turns out to be six weeks.
Mr. DeAndrea, I can just stop you right there. That's actually change duh, so it's not even changing, it's changed duh.
It's gonna be better for us?
Yeah, he's, what he's gonna be doing is he's gonna be reviewing things on a first-come, first-served basis, which, by the way, does complicate things for us.
I can just tell what we're gonna say when we don't have his comments.
So we're working, we're working it out, but to Mr. DeAndrea's point, you know, it's...
None of these comments...
It's a juggling thing, so I can understand why you get frustrated, but we've done it the other way, and then it's something that we need to work very, that we need to work a lot on, frankly, because there's a lot of behind-the-scenes juggling that happens with all of these things.
And we appreciate your side also, but these are not major comments.
Right, but I can tell you that it's, what you want to have happen is what's going to be happening.
I honestly think it'll reduce Scott's stress and certainly reduce ours, and it would certainly eliminate repetitive appearances here, but I think that's all good for everybody.
We're always happy.
Not everyone can be happy.
I always like to see very good plans.
Yeah, we're always happy.
It's a very good plan with some dots.
No, we, I mean, I think we appreciate what you have done on this, instead of going for five units, and you could have gotten an email from Scott.
All right, so it's conceivable that we get an email from Scott. Had we been able to contact Scott, we would have probably been able to change that, but...
We did notice you were ready for the May 2 meeting, so it's the major issue.
Okay, so we're gonna get these things done. We actually started working on them already, obviously. And I've requested a meeting with Scott for the next available time. And that was supposed to be for tomorrow, but he was unable to make another slot. So we've got one scheduled for next Wednesday, and in the meantime, we'll have it done so that by May 2, we should be all done. Okay? So we'll move forward with that, appreciate your comments.
And why wouldn't Highway commented?
Because Highway's not going to, they don't, what they're doing is issuing a permit, so they're not gonna go through that process until you're done. So it's not, they're not commenting as DPW would be commenting, right?
So they're not addressing?
They're not, so Scott comments as part of DPW division, but in order to get a comment out of Highway, the only mechanism to do that is to apply for a permit, and they're not going to entertain a permit until they know that this plan's approved.
We understand that, but I just wanted to let the commission know that we had prepared the plan, you know, so that it was thought out and not just guessing.
You tried to get a permit.
We tried.
Not waiver-stripped.
All right, thank you.
I sure...
Oh, by the way, was there any public comment on this before he leaves the room?
Public comment? No.
Then we'll keep this open.
It's kind of funny, because I distracted you right at the last minute.
You did.
Yeah, it was my fault.
Asking me a question.
I know, but there's no decree.
Items number 10 and 11, which we've been hearing as a single, but keeping separate records.
What happened to IDAR court?
Was postponed.
Oh, I missed that.
You didn't listen at the beginning of the meeting?
No, I didn't listen, I was reading.
The chairman went through it.
She got all excited after she was announced secretary.
Oh, yeah, lucky me. It's this one I don't like.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. We were here before you in March, and you asked us to address some questions regarding traffic and accident data. We had a meeting with staff, the Public Works Department, and your traffic consultant, Beta. And based on that, we prepared a supplemental report, which has been submitted to you and which has received favorable comments both from the Engineering Division and from your traffic consultant. We also met with the Architectural Review Committee that approved both properties on east and west side of Mason Street. The one comment that the ARC did have, which is interesting, because I understand that same comment was made yesterday, is that what would be very good would be to have a planter right along the parking area and the sidewalk on the west side. Because the basement of the existing building comes out all the way to the property line here, we can't plant anything that would have roots that would go lower. We have proposed, and the ARC accepted, landscaping in this corner here, as well as landscaping here, and the additional substantial landscaping on the south side here. But what they suggested was a planter with the Texas, and our landscape architect is putting that together so that we can provide that to ARC and to you.
At the briefing yesterday, we discussed the northwest corner of the parking lot at the Sales Building.
The northwest corner would be right in here.
Or there's nothing.
Again, this, we could put planters there, certainly, but because the...
I know, the building's there.
The building, the garage is underneath it, we would not be able to do that. But we can certainly put landscaping there as well.
Just from my own personal records, I couldn't find, I found the approval from DPW on the west side at the 290, 294. I couldn't find, going through all of my paper, did we ever get the similar thing for the east side of the road? The odd number?
Yeah, when we met with Public Works last month, we treated it again as one site. So I suspect that when they are submitting this to you, they are really dealing with both sites on either side, as was Beta. And in fact, I think they did the same thing back in January, too.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Actually, they did, they did not, because what I did find, and the last thing I did find, is that the DPW did comment, and this is a separate thing. I'm sorry, this was the 290, 294, got stapled again in the wrong package. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I did confirm with the DPW about that. They referenced all four application numbers, both site plans, both special permits, on the top of the page, and so it is their intention to...
What page number is it?
Look at, oh, that's, this is the old one.
I don't know if it made it in our packets.
The new one? No, we got it.
It's in the green.
I think it arrived with you on Monday morning.
We got it as a loose sheet, I think.
I think Monday, or did it come in the green folder?
We got it, I'll find it in a second. Okay, we got, it was the loose sheet, it came in the weekend packet, and it does, in fact, at the department project number at the top, it's 16, 612, 613, 614, 615.
Which are all applications? Yes, that's all four applications, Mr. Chairman.
And then they give the project address, and of course, that's what I read, and...
And they said resubmit before building permit.
No, yeah, before building permit now.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I couldn't find the one for the east side of the street, but I now see where you've noticed it. Okay. So that's that one.
Just to review the changes that we did make based on that, we made this two-way and widened it slightly. In lieu of that, they wanted one of these to be a pass aisle, but with the two-way traffic here, that was acceptable to them. We narrowed this curb cut slightly, and... That was it for site plan issues. We took the five service bays out of the lower level of the building on the west side so that these five will just be auto storage rather than active bays. These will continue to be the wash and detail bays that, as they've been used previously.
So you have marked up the site to sew the CGB zone and the CGBR?
Yes, and we have, as requested at the briefing yesterday, we have that.
Guys, move forward. What about the parking spaces, the parking spaces for patrons on the Sales Building that are in front of the doors?
Spaces four, five, and six, I think is what it is.
Blocking the doors to those two service bays.
The two service bays are right here. We would like to be able to keep at least these two spaces here and just eliminate those two, because that will be a fairly active...
Yes. So you're going to remove the two that are actually in front of the service doors, but keep the other two or one?
There are two, just to the, there's these two here, and then these two would be kept.
And are they numbered on that plan, Mr. Hegney?
Yes, actually, this base is not actually counted, but there's four, five, and six here.
And you're gonna remove four?
So they're keeping four and five and remove six?
Correct.
Will those spaces now that are left there, will they just be signed for customer visitors, or how will they...
That's gonna be for visitor parking, yes.
Okay. All the ZBA approvals have been given, ARC comments, I think, have been addressed or will be addressed.
Yes, you did ask at the briefing yesterday about the turning radius for SU 30 delivery truck. And our traffic engineers have placed that on the site plan. These deliveries are made early in the morning. The truck would come in. They actually bring it in a cart that they can take off the truck, take the cart that's in the building that's empty from the parts the day before, switch them, and then back up and go out. So we have that template, and we can provide that to staff. Other than that, I think we have addressed all of the issues that were outstanding back in March.
That's parking, planting. DPW's okay. Any other commission comments?
Mr. Chair, for staff's benefit, could you indicate that northwest corner again where the planter is requested?
Bingo.
Thank you very much.
It's about as northwest, that's right.
North by northwest.
How about the drawing showing the property line?
We did that, he did that, I just asked.
He put that on the plans.
I do have that, and I have copies for staff.
They did it from between the briefing meeting and today's, tonight's meeting.
The other thing, Mr. Hegney, while you're walking around, is on this one, what we'd like to add is that, since this, there's this strange thing about how the building extends a part of that building, because of that zone line, that any change of use in that building, any change would, any change in that building would have to come to us.
Well, this portion of the building is what extends over the CGBR.
Right. But what we're gonna say is, what we want to say is, because there's a portion of that building extending, that any change in that building would have to come to us.
In use of the building. Oh, certainly, I would expect that anyway.
Right, I mean, it's pretty much what you would have to do if you were doing a change of use, so...
True. Since it's been used for auto sales and service for the last 100 years, maybe it won't change for a while.
I mean, the whole building, so what is being done on the avenue side of that building.
Oh, okay.
Well, I don't know, we don't...
Well, because, see, because you're in the CGBR, you've got a piece of that, so that you're thinking of it in the zoning context comprehensively.
In other words, it's not a separate parcel, so it's all part of the...
It is, it is separated, so you can't go from there to this portion to the portion that faces on Greta Avenue.
But they make things that break down walls, have you ever seen those?
No, I haven't seen that before.
So based on that, no, seriously, it's just because it is one structure, and it crosses the line that is just a concern.
The other, see, it's technically, it's not, we don't have anything to, I don't know, it's on the other side of that view? But it's not, it's not in the record anywhere what's there, so how do we know what's been changed?
Well, we know what's there.
Well, we know what's there, it's an art gallery, isn't it?
Yes.
What's above it, is it residential above it?
Art gallery.
No, it's in art gallery on both floors.
Two stories?
I think so.
I think it's two stories, yeah, you're right.
Well, somewhere, somewhere we should, we should get something from the applicant if we're gonna say any change in use. We gotta tie down with the existing uses.
Well, the existing use is in art gallery, and we're gonna put that.
Mr. Chair, I think it's also important that we get the address of that business, because this is all related to Mason Street, and Mason Street...
I understand.
Okay, so we're gonna have just this, as just a condition, or just...
As a condition, yeah.
We're just gonna say that the address and the current use will be clarified, and that any change...
Right, and the decision legal should note that.
The other thing we could do is any...
The full address.
Maybe to simplify that even, any change in use, which... Let's just say any change in use.
That's fine.
That's okay.
Yeah, make me happy, or I'll punch you.
I'm worried that all these notes you're taking, you'll write down something very bad, and so then I'm hung up that way.
All right, so that's number 10.
Okay, any, so there's no other changes, any other comments from the commission?
No.
You have public.
I know. Any comments from the public?
Hello, it's John Doogie. I own the building at 20 and 22 Bruce Park Avenue, across the street. I was just curious what the, with all the recent changes, what the final parking tally looks like, how many are needed and how many they're providing? If someone can answer that.
Any other questions?
That was my main question. I was also, I was reviewing the files yesterday, and they said that they were gonna have like five mechanics and one or two service car wash detailer employees. And the plans that I had reviewed at that point were calling for much more bays than mechanics, but then I saw that there was a recent submission with five less bays. And so I was just curious in terms of how the mechanics and bays and mainly related to parking.
What they have done, what they have done is reduce the number of service bays in the west building and put it into storage. And they've submitted a drawing showing such.
Okay.
So that does reduce the parking, yes.
And how, are they providing, now providing enough parking on site, or...
I'm sorry?
Are they now providing adequate parking on site?
We'll ask them. I'll try to, I'll ask them your question.
I thought that that was what they had provided.
D U G E. And my other question was, would the employees be required to park on site?
Any other public comment? No?
You said the next one, you said the east side.
You heard the questions, if you want me to repeat them, I will.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's fine. On Mr. DeAndrea's plan, we show employee parking, which is sufficient. Actually, I believe it will be more than sufficient for the employees, because when we spoke with the general manager of Acura, when they were actually, when he was operating Honda here before he went to operate Acura, he found about a third of his employees were actually taking the train because of the location here. We do provide 20 parking spaces on that upper level for employee parking, which will satisfy parking... which will satisfy parking for employees on site. We have a total of 75 parking spaces on the east side and 29 on the west side, counting the service bays themselves. And because we have removed five service bays on the west side, we are more conforming than we were, we are with the current operation.
How does that, how does this whole number of spaces being provided equal the requirements of 6158?
We are required to have 87 parking spaces on the east side and we have 75. And we're required to have 75 parking spaces on the west side and we have 29.
So totaling that up, where are we?
So we have a total of 104. And we have 162 required. Having said that, we are more conforming than we were before and we have also provided a parking deck here for seven additional spaces.
Was that in the, was that in the 104 or?
That, yes, that's part of the 75 here.
I mean, we're not adding any square footage to this with the exception of the small addition of square footage of the extension of those service bays.
We're adding square footage in three places. This is an entry portal, it's 101 square feet. We have parts and oil storage here and this addition to the service bay area to make it more really usable. They do service six cars in there now, but it's extremely tight. Here, we're removing what had been showroom and office space and that's going to be a pass through for drop off, however, we do count it as square footage because it does have garage doors. And of course, overall, the activity, as we indicated in the correspondence, is substantially less with Acura is what's been going on with Honda.
And I think, didn't DPW comment on that too or not?
On which part?
The adequacy of the parking related to the change in use?
I don't remember them.
I don't think they commented.
I don't think commented on the parking. What you might be thinking is that in Mr. Hagney's cover letter, he was referring to the bays on the left-hand side and there being a reduction in the number of parking on that side.
Correct.
No, I know that, I know that, I'm just, I know we had traffic and sometimes, let me then ask another question. We had traffic studies done by Adler, no, no, not on this one, by Adler, this one is.
Clark.
Galante. And we've also had our traffic engineer beta look at it.
Correct.
Do you recall their comments regarding parking? Did they think there's a problem or not?
They didn't address it in their last memo.
Well, their last memo was pretty clean, yeah, but the one before.
Well, Mr. Chair, the prior comments were based on the previous plans that showed more bays and, you know, didn't have the benefit of the additional information of the use.
No, I understand, but if. Their first memo to us in March. I'll tell you what, let's do, Mr. Hagney, could you just go through that first memo where they did get into rather lengthy comments on parking?
Mr. Chairman, I don't seem to have that with me. So this is the beta memo dated March 17th, which talks about traffic and then parking. And it says parking consideration section includes a description of the existing and proposed spaces on site with respect to amount, type, and locations. Following comments are offered in consideration. Traffic counts should be collected at intersections, the vicinity, and that was part of our meeting with them last month to discuss exactly what was needed. The parking demand for this site, including the needed spaces for inventory displaying employee service and sales, patron vehicles should be determined based on data from other similar Acura facilities in the region. We have one on West Putnam Avenue which is going to be closing while it moves here and.
But to the adequacy of the parking, even taking that existing facility, how?
Says as shown on the site plan, employee parking spaces are hard to maneuver. And that's true, they do pack them in tightly.
I know.
And applicants should clarify how parking operations for employees will work and we did that as part of our supplemental information to you. And they again stated approximately 15 service vehicles with Acura and currently 70 per day with Honda. And that was it in terms of their discussion on parking.
Do you know what the parking total is for the Acura dealer on West Putnam Avenue?
Not off the top of my head, no, I know that they, they do have a fair amount of parking on site, which I would say, having looked at the, at the aerial photos, they had approximately 60 cars on site.
Do you know the number of service bays they have there?
I think they have six service bays.
Because clearly the building sizes are much larger on this new site than they are on the site on.
This will give them some elbow room that they currently don't have and this facility will operate much better with Acura than it has with Honda, given the amount of volume. Honda's selling 170 cars a month and Acura's selling somewhere between 20 and 25.
One final question on the parking. We know that you're building that parking deck to add spaces. We know you're reducing demand because you're taking away some of the service spaces in the west building. So you're adding some, you're reducing the demand for that. Do you? In an overall, just overall parking, are you increasing the number of parking spaces on this site or decreasing? Or are they the same?
Because we lose a couple of spaces in here and we're adding them here and taking a couple of spaces away here, basically, we're ending up with the same number of spaces that we had before because we've still counted the service bays previously as parking spaces, even though now they're just going to be storage. So I would say that we're really ending up with the same number of spaces that we have now.
But a?
But with a less demand.
A lesser demand.
For spaces, yes.
Okay. Any other public comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we wish to close it?
Yes. No one else was answering, I figured.
You okay with closing it?
Yes.
Closing it? Okay, close it.
Thank you.
Can we take a break?
Sure. That is the end of the public hearing, you get to go home, lucky you. Well, we got four or five to decide. Yes, we'll turn them on now, we had them off during the. Okay, the first one is the property on Weaver Street, 202 Weaver Street where the. Yeah, it's, it's either to be looked at as a subdivision or re-subdivision.
Right.
And then the, just the matter of the open space, I think, on itself. Do you want to talk about it or do you want to make a motion? Okay, let's go.
Okay, so hereby move that we find that this is neither a subdivision or a re-subdivision. And we note the following, that the applicant shall be recording a map showing the consolidation and that it will refer to the existing easements showing on the map that is on file. That the applicant will submit copies of the recorded sewer easement to the benefit of the town. And that the applicant will work with the conservation department regarding their two comments on the use of pesticides as well as invasive species management.
In the open space.
In the open space. And the applicant shall address any other outstanding staff and departmental comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one is?
I'm going to need help on 11 because I didn't take any notes on it, but 10.
Well, 10 and 11 are the same, so I guess we have to vote them differently. Katie, let's, just for one second, do we have to vote them separately or can?
Yes.
Well, they are, yeah, because they are, they're two separate parcels of land, so even though it's, they're being together, I think that they are two separate.
And they're on the different sides of the street and everything, so we should.
They were submitted as two separate applications also.
So this is approval for, oh, I'm going to mess this up now, this is approval. I'm going to do 11 first, which is the even side because that is the one, so that is 290 and 294 because that's the one on which I have some comments.
I think what you could do though is reference the other parcel, you know, that it's used.
Yes, I think that would make sense that we make, that we, I think, I think if we noted in the decision letter especially that there were two applications that were submitted simultaneously for how these two properties, for how the two sides of the street were going to function. I think that would help future generations. Just a couple of things on this one. The, that we had asked for the planters on the northwest corner, that the parking shall be changed from what is submitted such that the space which is numbered as six will be removed. But the other two that appear to block the access to the bay.
No, they don't, but just say four and five will remain.
Four and five will remain. And that any change of use in the entirety of the building, including the portion of the building that fronts on the avenue, would have to come back to the commission and that the applicant shall provide to staff what the current uses are and the actual address of the front of the building at this time as part of the permit process.
Yeah, I mean, we need the address for the decision legal, I'm sure that we can get that.
And then?
I think the address number is 405.
Does anybody, you want to make some comments on the parking and the traffic and anything else, Richard?
It's really hard because now we're going back and forth, but I think.
No, we're only on the even side right now.
No, I know that, but the service people parking over here work over here too, so.
So I think we should say that in the decision letter. That there is ample space provided for employee parking, but that it is at the, on the other part.
East parcel.
On the east parcels.
No, it's going to be parcel because these are supposed to be consolidated, so that, when we get there, we'll talk about that.
On what shall be a consolidated eastern parcel. And that the parking for the employees is sufficient, but then part of it will be provided there. Do you want to say anything else about parking?
I think the only thing is the applicant did reduce the parking demand on the west side of the parcel on the even side of the street by removing five service bays in the lower level. So I think that's, other than that, I think, I just think that's, that's fine. It's my opinion, we have nothing from any consultant that says the parking doesn't work, so absent that, it does work. And I think compared to other Acura dealers, it certainly while more building space, I think that has more parking than is in their current location.
Second.
Well, just, I think somewhere in here, we have to say that they've been before ZBA and got that approval, they've been to ARC and got that approval, they've been to, what was the other one, was there another one? Where do we say, just ZBA?
Special exception.
They don't go any further.
Sure.
I think that.
But, yeah, but all, all, you know, that all the relevant departments have.
Well, yeah, I mean, DPW has approved, so. Okay, I.
And that all the comments from Beta have been addressed.
Did you get that adding of the landscaping at the sales building in the northwest corner?
I did indeed.
You did, okay.
Yes, I did.
I heard the word landscaping, but I didn't know.
I said planters, I actually didn't say landscaping.
It was planter.
Okay.
Oh, planter, singular, thank you.
I guess that's it unless anybody else has got anything else to add. So that's the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we have to do the other side and on that, I think that all we can say again is to hereby move approval of the final site plan and special permit. And in so doing that, all departmental reviews have been completed, that that this is part, again, it's part, that two applications were presented at the same time, that this, these parcels will be merged. And I think we need to say something about that they're going to work in, that they have been designed to work together with the separate application at 290 and 294.
I think, I think what we should say is on the properties being merged, they did file a map of consolidation. Does, would this map, Katie, would this map that they filed require the signature on it or not, or should it?
I almost think it's a good idea. It's in their benefit because then it's.
Okay, so the consolidation map shall be consistent with a map for the running land records and requiring the signature of the.
We've done it both ways, I think it's, I think it's in their best interest. Obviously, there's no timeline associated with it like there would be for a subdivision or something, but.
Well.
The only issue is actually, Mr. Lucio Chair, is that the tax assessor's office sometimes is hesitant to allow those mergers of tax parcels without our, you know, intervention. So I don't know if it's worthwhile to say if it's necessary for the tax assessor to get a map filed, signed by the chairman or I don't know if that's.
They're going to give us a map signed. And then if they need it to go to the tax assessor, that's their, that's a secondary thing, right?
I'm sorry.
I'm saying if they have a map signed by the, by the commission and they take it into the, into the tax assessor and I guess that's all they would need to do.
Well, the town clerk, right.
Yeah, it'd be the clerk first.
Somebody, if they want to get their taxes changed or modified, they'll know who to go to. We did get a landscaping plan, I guess that's part of the approval that we got for, and the lighting plan and everything, those all seem to be fine. and the lighting plan and everything, those all seem to be fine. I don't have anything else to say, I don't think. Anybody else got anything?
No, second?
He's been trying to second for a while.
I know, he wants to go home. Any, okay, move seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Then we have one last thing to do tonight, and that is to do a decision on item A and decision items for Rary Properties LP to amend prior approvals, and the important thing is the change of use of the existing residence on the northwest corner of the property from maintenance headquarters to a single-family residential use.
Okay, now, we caught up with everybody, I tried to catch up with a couple of people on this, I talked, maybe Katie, you should go listen, but.
So, so this item's closed and now it's a, now it's a decision item and there is a procedural question relating to the notice, but because the applicant submitted this, this application to you as the parcel of land that the house sits on, as opposed to the greater parcel that, of land, which, I think it's, what was the total amount, like 96 acres, or some, which comprised this small piece of the .4519 acres, the planned unit development known as Chieftain's and open space parcel, but they didn't submit it like that, they submitted it just with the, the .45 acre property which the house sits on, and they noticed, they noticed neighbors based on that parcel. So, so to that end, the, the notice is correct, but it's not then part of the planned unit development, so, so the issue of.
We're just limiting our use.
Yeah, I think there was a confusion at one point when they say, oh, we'll make it the 29th unit, but if that's the case, then they should have noted, they would have had to have noticed the, the butters of the entire 96 acres.
I understand that, but I tried to limit what I was saying to just the change of use.
Right, so to that end, that's the point, so to that end, they've come in for just the change of use on the .45 acre property, and they have noticed it correctly since it's a parcel of land that was defined on the original subdivision map, and so it's, the notice is correct is the long-winded way of saying that.
So, I, anybody have any comments?
No.
Okay, so I hereby move approval of the final site plan and special permit, and I just want to ask Katie this, the way I had originally written it, it said to amend the 1988 approval of the Gimbel estate development, but I think we would be walking into a bad place, so I'm gonna say instead.
What it says there.
Well, if you look at the notice, it has that amendment, so I'm gonna skip that and I'm gonna say to change the use on, of the existing, of a building located, of a, on a .4519 acre property at 1139 King Street. And that is in the RACC4 zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay?
HO.
HO.
HO. And we make the, and so it's.
Well, it is, it is, it's a change in the site plan approval that has the condition.
I would not, I have the problem, oh, okay, they had a condition that that property, okay.
Right, so just changing that condition.
Right.
Okay, all right, but just, I just.
You're changing the restriction that was imposed on that.
That's what I said, change of use, we just keep it there?
Stay there. Now, in so doing, we note that the water service line to this property goes through the open space for Chieftain's and is granted indeed in perpetuity.
Why do we have to say that?
Well, because I'm really uncomfortable with this.
Well, it's a, it's a home that has, that functions with its own water and own sewer now.
No, it isn't.
And not sewer, excuse me, septic, has its own septic.
Yes, but I'm talking about.
And it has water that comes into the house now, that's not changing as part of this.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we're trying to.
But it belongs to Chieftain's.
That's correct, but I'm saying it's not.
But there's also town.
She said there's no change, okay, you know, you know how I feel about this, every time I look at this thing, I get this.
Want someone else to make the motion?
No, I'm good, I, okay, so the septic is, it has its own septic, and then I think the only other thing we said was that no additions or modifications can be made to this building without becoming, coming before the commission as well as the HDC.
Why HDC?
Because it's an HO.
Because it's an HO, right.
And we said that when we were talking about it before we hit the stumbling block, and I think actually you.
No, we, we said that the zoning, they couldn't do it without a variance or anything, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
They already exceed.
But actually, Tess, he told us that they would not change the building without coming to us, he said that, so we can make it a condition.
Yeah, but one thing is a choice, you have to.
So we're just gonna make it a condition. Okay.
Second.
I think we're good. Water, you guys fixed that, yeah, got the zone, all outstanding.
So then the question becomes, they would file a new map.
Just them.
That is just that, because you'd have to, you have to have some way of showing that that condition is changed, so.
Yeah, and are they, so they're in existing non-conformity.
Right.
Because they're undersized in the zone.
Right, it was, it was the parcel plan that was shown on the original subdivision map.
Which is a little.
Can't we just keep it simple?
Yes.
Two, three minutes.
Right.
The building that's on the site right now is over FAR for that site, right?
Right, just say that.
I just, I, I.
Yeah, whatever.
Just say any changes to the building need to return to P and Z period, that's it.
I don't know why I dislike this one.
I don't know, I gave you, I gave you the chance to bow out and have someone else do it, so.
It's one of those things that when you do it, you have a feeling it's gonna come back to haunt you.
I got to put on this thing first.
Okay, I think that's it.
You done?
Yeah, we're done.
Okay, you've moved the motion, did you second Andy?
I did.
We've tried like four times already.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have any minutes?
Through that.
Yeah, April 4th.
I hereby move minutes from April 4th as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.